All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, good afternoon and very grateful to be here. And first of all, on behalf of Supervisor Effen Creo, who we are grateful is here today, and the entire Sonoma County Board of Supervisors, we want to say thank you for stepping up to be able to serve the community and, of course, this incredible library system. Mr. May, if it is okay with you, just would like to say a few words. First of all, I do think this is a historic day for the Sonoma County Library System. It's the first time in 39 years that a newly constituted Library Commission will be convened and new bylaws adopted. And we can only hope that this new governing document will bring the Sonoma County Library System as much success as the previous Joint Powers Agreement, which was borne by former visionary Library Director David Savsay. And do want to say thank you to Mr. Savsay's legacy, who has brought us here today and as we move forward into the next 40 years. And I do think that today represents a new day for Sonoma County's library system. Coming out of this great recession and also some leadership challenges, all of you have stepped up to be able to turn the corner. And I think that with the previous Library Commission selecting a new director, a new Chief Financial Officer, and now stepping forward on setting a strong financial foundation with a potential sales tax, this system is ready to go. And I just want to say thank you. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, would also like to be able to thank all of those individuals that spent about 24 meetings over almost two years forming the new JPA as well as bringing forward this commission. I do want to say thank you to Julia Fries, who represented the Library Commission, Bob Cox from the Cloverdale City Council, we had the City Manager from the City of Hillsburg, the City Manager from the Town of Windsor, Jennifer Phillips from the City of Santa Rosa, of course, the Councilman from Renner Park, who is also going to be serving on the commission. Councilman, thank you so much for all of your incredible work, sir, in over the last 24 months and now leading into today. John Del Oso from Cotati, Teresa Barrett from Petaluma, of course, Sarah Glade Gurney, who is here today along with Mayor Jacob, very grateful for Ms. Glade Gurney's incredible work, and of course, the tremendous team from both the County Administrator's Office, and I do believe Veronica Ferguson is here, she is on her way, who wanted to be able to celebrate, and the tremendous team in both the joint co-library interim Library Directors that helped staff this commission. We just want to say thank you. And I think we need to give our JPA Review Committee the incredible staff team a round of applause really quickly.[191.12][191.12][applause] Mr. May, I will turn it back over to you. And do want to say thank you too to Mr. May. He was at every meeting commenting and providing valuable input. We had literally dozens of individuals that had provided public comment and hundreds of individuals that provided emails and input into the process. It was a robust process with public input. And we do want to say thank you to all of those that took time out of their busy day to be able to attend one of the 24 meetings that helped bring us to this signing ceremony today. And again, Mr. May, thank you for all your leadership and work.
And I would like to say thank you. I think if anybody wants to go back or could go back and see the almost two-years' worth of meetings, and for me, there were several things that struck me. I'll start by saying, at first, I thought it didn't need to happen. But secondly, I saw democracy in action. I saw compromise. I saw debate. I saw commitment. And it really reminded me, first of all, how important our democracy is; secondly, how important it is that our democracy has people who care enough to serve; and thirdly, that sometimes things require compromise. And that I think we have a better document, we have a wider input from the community, and I'm happy that we can proceed with this new page being turned. Now, I think it's the next step, Rebecca? Rebecca's busy. Is the actual signing? Do we have a document that needs to be signed?
Yes.
Okay, so that needs to happen up there. And I think in terms of signing, the appropriate people to sign are the members of the community who are here, who either served on the committee or represent their community. At this point, there is really no one to sign for the commission, and it's not a commission document. So shall we go over there for the signing? We can hang around or just watch. Mike, people come on down for the signing? Also, I might add, there are refreshments, but they're not till after our meeting.[354.41][354.41][laughter]
[inaudible]
I remember when summers used to be laid back, we still worked.
Hi.
Good.
This is crazy.
I'm going for a few days vacation.
I'm doing a training, supervising a training.
I'm doing 10 days before.
Why is it quiet?
The garden?
It's got the green, it's in the Holy Ghost.
Yeah.
And if you go to the top of it, you actually walk around and see the helicopters.
It's quite, it's quite a beautiful place.
It'd be interesting to compare the first round, if it's actually the saw until it's
changed.
I wouldn't want to.
Nice place to be.
Stepdaughter, her husband.
Oh, does he have?
It's so funny because I know so many people.
And I'll say, you know, because I'm there for the meeting.
Do I go even for breakfast or lunch or something?
Oh, no, it's too far to drive.
So they have a psychological, psychologically, it's too far.
I love it.
Yeah, the first time we went.
Oh, that's fun.
Except for a couple of places.
But we were right here.
We don't eat a super majority unless we do, but that will be next week.
Get in trouble at the grocery store.
Good to see you again, twice in one week.
Drives the barcode scanner crazy.
Hi.
I'm Randall.
Okay, they want to have a picture of the new commissioners with the JPA.
They want to have a picture in front of the new commissioners with the JPA.
Those four are responsible.
[laughing]
[inaudible]
We've got a hard day, we're here in the county.
[inaudible]
I would be remiss, now that County Administrator Ferguson has arrived, to not publicly thank her for the time and effort that went on to make this happen. And also, especially to Mike McGuire, who essentially [applause] was the spirit behind having this go on. So thank you, Mike. All right, that being said, now we'll move on to the next item, action items by motion, the election of officers. I think that it may make sense to think about having interim officers until we have adopted bylaws, okay? I think that's a good idea also. Oh, okay. Can I put a motion into who that may be? You certainly may. Is it appropriate at this point? That's, yes. I think for the good of the commission and the library that Tim May should remain as Commissioner and -- As Chair. As a Chair, I'm sorry. Well, as a Chair, you should be Commissioner too. I will be. As Chair and Co-Chair, Elena Whistler. Okay. Okay. And is that, until the bylaws are adopted? Until the bylaws are adopted. Yes. Amy?
What is the timeframe for the bylaws that we are looking at before we start voting on the interim position?
I just was speaking with Brett this morning about that. And at the next meeting, we'll be discussing the Bylaws Committee. And I would hope that the Bylaws Committee comes to us with bylaws no later than December. Okay. All right. There any discussion from the commission about that proposal? No? Don't know whether we need public comment about that, but, pardon me?
Do we have a second?
We don't have a second yet. I'll second that. All right. No public comment. Is there, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so we're on board for at least a few more months. All right. Pardon me?
You do all the work.
[laughing] Makes sense. All right, now we're opening a public hearing for the proposed ordinance, for the proposed ordinance for the count, the possible tax initiative that the commission could put on the ballot and we would be voting on whether to put that on the ballot or not on August 7th, next Thursday. So we will be opening public hearing. Let's begin public hearing. I might also add, I'm sure everyone is aware, but I will put in that on Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors adopted, or at least put forward their version of this tax initiative. And so that will be approved, hopefully, at the Board of Supervisors meeting on next Tuesday. So that is already on the table, all right? So now, hereby opening public comment. If you would like to speak to the proposal for us to put a ballot measure forward to increase the library, to have the Library Commission put a 1/8 of a cent tax ballot measure on the ballot, now is the time to speak.
Congratulations, everyone. Barbara McKenzie, 1536 Gladstone Way in Renner Park. Along with all of you, I was thrilled that the Board of Supervisors put the tax measure on the ballot on Tuesday, or voted to do it. So assuming that will happen this coming Tuesday, that's, I hope that it happens that way, and I would just go on record as if it doesn't happen that way, that we have our fallback Hail Mary position that you vote at your next meeting to do that. And I fully support it and am thrilled that it's going to get on there one way or the other. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public wish to speak? I think then it is appropriate that I close public comment on this item, and then we'll move forward to action items by resolution. We have two action items by resolution which both relate to -- She has, yes, she has a question.
Yes, are we going to have commission questions?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Is this okay time?
Right.
So I just had a question with respect to process. I understand the need to have both agenda items at the same time. So will both the Library Commission and the Board of Supervisors move forward together up until what time with their respective initiatives for the tax?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So I guess, in looking at this, it took me a little while, being a new Commissioner, to understand what was happening, because you have two different entities moving forward with the same goal.
Right.
That is to put the 8th of a cent sales tax on the ballot.
Right.
And we have the, in the spirit of time, we're both moving at the same time, but at one point, someone's going to peel off. We're not going to both put the 8th of a cent. So that's what I'm wondering, is the timing.
My understanding, and I hope staff and other people would step in if I'm incorrect, is that we, at this meeting, essentially vote to put it forward to the meeting on the 7th. In the interim, on the 5th of August, the Board of Supervisors will have its final decision as to the tax initiative. I would imagine, I can't speak for all of us, because we are a group, that if, and I would imagine that it's not, that it's going to pass on next Tuesday from the Board of Supervisors, then I would imagine that on the next Thursday at our meeting, we will vote not to put it on the ballot. That's what I would imagine. But if by some, it feels like this is insurance, that if it, by some action on the Board of Supervisors doesn't happen, we still have the opportunity next Thursday to put it on the ballot if we want to.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and have both move forward today?
Right.
And by next week, we'll have a little more information.
By next week, we'll have more information.
And so just a follow-up question to that, if I may?
Pardon me?
A follow-up question to that, if I may?
Certainly.
Thank you. So my following question is with regard to a memo that we received from legal counsel since the last meeting, and that was regarding the JPA's ability to put forward a tax measure. And so I just was hoping that either maybe perhaps staff or somebody could help me with where we stand with regard to that, to our ability, because that seemed still a bit murky to me. I really appreciate the memo, by the way.
Sure, my pleasure. Linda Shilken with County Counsel's Office?
I don't think you're on.
Can you hear me?
No.
Not good.
Lot of bad.
Can you hear me? Yep. Linda Shilken with County Counsel's Office, and what questions do you have?
Well, in your memo, you had indicated that it was a, there was certain, in reading the memo anyway, what I understood was there is no question that the Board of Supervisors has the authority and the ability to put forward an 8th cent sales tax measure. But I wasn't clear whether we have that ability.
The document, the JPA document that all of the members have signed, has granted the JPA that authority. The risks that are associated with that and uncertainties are set forth in the memo.
So that's it?
Well, there are some uncertainties. There's pending legislation at this time about JPA's authority to levy taxes. And there is proposals that that would be declaratory of existing law.
Existing state law.
Exactly. And there are over 700 JPAs, many of whom have already levied taxes and have exerted this authority when granted so by their member signing jurisdictions.
So is this a new development in JPA law? Or is this, when you say a number of JPAs have already done tax measures?
Thanks.
Is that like over the course of the last five years, five months? I'm just wanting some clarity on the risk.
Here.
Veronica Ferguson, the County Administrator. And Linda wasn't with us as we did all the JPA conversations. We switched County Counsels in the middle, and if Ann Kekk were here, she would tell you every nuance there is into this authority. But absolutely, your JPA has all of the authority that the county and the city share jointly, and we have an ability to put taxes on, so you now have the ability to put taxes on. So there's no question about that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So any further questions? Any further questions or comments from the commission regarding this? Are you clear how we're proceeding? Can I see just, I'll use, this question is, are you clear how we're proceeding? Thumbs up? I learned this from somebody in the audience.[1348.25][1348.25][laughter] I would just like one question on the next special, or the next meeting, which is on next Thursday. When you're in Michigan. When I'm in Michigan. So at what point will I know that I don't have, 24 hours before, post the agenda? By the way, should we pause now? Okay, I will ask that question in a moment, but we're now calling to bring in a member on --
So my apologies in advance if this goes a little wonky.
Okay. Wonky is a term that --
It's an important, technical term.
A technical term.[1392.02][1392.02][laughing] While you're doing that, I'll say that Dawn just came in and we send our thanks to you for all you did over the JPA process. Thank you, Dawn.[1405.75][1405.75][applause]
Paul?
Yeah?
Thank you for your patience. We've got you online now.
Welcome to the meeting, Paul. What I'll be doing is I'll be specifically, as we go through discussion, I'll be specifically asking you if you have comments, so that we, because I can't see if you have comments, so I will be asking. And I'll tell you that right now, what has happened so far is we've had the election of officers, and Helena and myself are continuing in the interim basis until the bylaws are adopted. And then we're now on to the question of whether, we've had the public hearing on the possibility of the commission's tax initiative going forward. There was one public comment, and then public comment was closed, and we are now in the discussion with the commissioners of questions that they might have regarding that moving forward with the tax initiative from the commission. The commission initiative versus the supervisors' commission initiative. Now, I don't know that it's fair to put anyone on the spot from the Board of Supervisors, and so I will just ask this question about what will happen, what, how will this item be on the agenda at this Board of Supervisors meeting on the 5th?[1513.25][1513.25][laughing] I'm glad you came.[1516.12][1516.12][laughter]
I asked how it will be on the agenda.
Veronica Ferguson again. This item is on the board's regular calendar for them to take in action, and so it would come up. Actually, I have several items on the regular calendar, but it'll come up as the board takes the regular calendar after consent, so around 9:30. And the question will be, will they support putting the ordinance on the measure? And so they will then have the opportunity to, once again, reaffirm the ordinance and then declare the language that will go into the ballot.
So it'll happen moderately early in the morning on Tuesday?
Moderately. I never can tell what the five of them are going to do, and yes, I would expect that it would be moderately early in the morning. And I was just thinking, one more thing I wanted to tell you. Oh, if you go online to our board packet, you can pull the item, and staff recommends moving forward in that regard.
Okay. The two documents? Yes, there are some differences. If I miss them all, people help me. One of the differences is that the Board of Supervisors proposal, or ordinance, or tax initiative includes a contingency that the state cap on sales tax needs to be raised. And what we heard at the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday was that the request to make that happen has already been put in gear. The other difference is that there is an element in the document that the Board of Supervisors will be getting a report annually from the Director of the Library as to how these increased funds are being used and whether they're meeting the guidelines of the initiative. Is there anything I'm forgetting on those two, Brett? Those are the two most significant differences. Do you have any other questions, Paul? We're at an interesting time in the agenda, in that we're in currently Commissioner comments following the public hearing. And then we will probably have a bit more discussion about this when we get to the action item to, item 5.2 on the agenda, to go forward with our tax initiative. So there will be time for more discussion on this as we move along. Is there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Heather?
Hillary.
Hillary. I'm going to get your name sometime, I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it. I have a question about the language in our ordinance and the language in the supervisor ordinance. I know there was discussion at the supervisors' meeting to change some language --
Ah, yes.
-- to include the unincorporated areas.
Right.
Will we be changing our language?
We would be changing our language too. As a matter of fact, I think we have already done that. There was an addition in the ordinance, the document on, from the county, that it had just listed the libraries, and we expanded it to include the unincorporated areas. All right. Did you get that? Are all the questions taken care of? Okay. All right. Now, moving on to a resolution in support of the Sonoma County Board of Supervis, oh, that was another contingency, was that the Board of Supervisors requested that we approve their ordinance. And that's what this action item is. Action Resolution in Support of the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors Proposed Ordinance. And in the agenda, I'm not used to the agendas being stapled. It's to consider whether to approve the resolution -- It's to consider whether, to approve the resolution in support of the Sonoma County's proposed ordinance. Now, Brett, there are some changes that, in this, but I think we should hear the changes before we hear the motion. Is that appropriate? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I apologize. I know that we're just getting started as a new group together, and so I just want to make sure I'm staying on track. Are we still on item 4.2 or are we on item 5.1?
We're on item 5.1.
So was there, do we, are we supposed to vote on 4.2 or do we, is that not a voting?
Item, it's not a voting issue.
Okay.
To hold.
I apologize. Thank you.
Hold the item, public comment open. Okay. Brett, you want to?
Sure. So I've been speaking with council, been working with Linda, and I'd recommend that you add some wording to your resolution to support the county's ordinance. If you look at that resolution, you see the first three, whereas.
Does everybody have it? It's, we don't have pages, numbers, but it's the.
It'd be page one, I think. So the third whereas ends with County Library Improvement Act. Do y'all see that? And then the, the suggestion is to add another paragraph that would read, whereas at the public hearing, there was overwhelming public support for the library, and the Sonoma County board members spoke favorably about the county and all of the Sonoma County cities working together cooperatively to support the public's access to education and knowledge through the library's improved programs and expanded hours to benefit all residents of our community, including those residents who live in the unserved and underserved areas of the county and. So if you approve that language, I'll work with Rebecca to get that inserted. And then.
That would be a new paragraph. Can you show it? Is it possible to project it? And I need to turn around. It's inserted in there. And essentially, that's including the language regarding the unserved areas of the county.
Correct.
All right, do people understand the insertion? I see, are you, let me check. And did, and Paul, did you, did you hear that and kind of get what's going on there? Okay.
And then I have some additional language to show you that pretty much mirrors what's said up there about the unincorporated areas of the county.
Yes.
So is this approved by the supervisors? Or is this going to be taken back and worked with, with the county in order to reconcile these languages?
Well, this is, this is just your resolution that's saying that you do support the county's ordinance.
But the county, county's ordinance did have the insertion.
It has the.
Of the, of the, the unincorporated and underserved areas.
All right.
So, yes.
And then on page two, you see the wording that adds, and the unincorporated areas of the county. And we've added that to both ordinances, just to be sure that folks understand that the funds would be used throughout the county and not just with the city libraries that are represented to the JPA.
All right. Is there any other change in the language to this?
No.
This resolution? All right. I believe the next step is to ask for a motion.
I move that the Sonoma County Library Commission adopt a resolution to support the county of Sonoma's proposed ordinance to place on the ballot for the November 4th, 2014 election, a proposed one-eighth of a cent sales tax measure entitled the Sonoma County Library Improvement Act, to support library operations, improve library programs, and expand the hours of library operations to benefit all residents of Sonoma County.
I second it.
All right. Do we need to insert the language as amended there or not?
As amended. Yeah.
Yes. So it should say as amended.
And as amended.
All right. Now's time for commission input. Paul, I'll let you listen to input, and then I will specifically ask for yours. And I think it would be helpful for Paul, if you have comments, questions, or statements, that you start by saying your name, so he has an idea who's speaking. All right. Any comments, questions? Shall we start? Let's start at this side. No questions, comments? Helena?
I'm in complete support of this, and applaud the Board of Supervisors for agreeing to put this forward. Thank you so much.
Yes. I will also say personally, if I did cartwheels, I would have done them outside the door on the way out. I'm in support of this, too. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your name, please.
Joanne Sanders. Thank you. I also support the concept of the Board of Supervisors taking this up. I think it belongs, it's best placed with the Board of Supervisors. So I'm encouraged by the fact that it's going to be returning to the regular calendar on Tuesday. Thank you.
I'll ask each individual, so that we're sure we have comments, questions. Paul? This Paul. Paul, Paul Heavenridge.
This is Paul Heavenridge. Paul. Yes, and I, again, I want to, I do want to thank the supervisors. I know it's, it's a, it's a tough year for tax proposals, and I think the community has spoken. We had, we had a lot of, a lot of support. We showed by the polling and numbers, and we really thank the supervisors for taking this up.
I would just like to note, during the public comment period at the Board of Supervisors meeting, that no one's spoken opposition, and I think that's important. Nor did any of the supervisors speak in opposition to it. So thank you to the public, and thank you to the supervisors.
Okay, Paul. Paul from Oregon, do you have any comments or questions? All right. Any public comment regarding this particular resolution? Come on up, Jonathan. Right there, yeah.
Hi. I just want to, Jonathan Greenberg from Sebastopol, and parent and the founder of Restore Library Hours. And I just want to thank the supervisors and then the commissioners for supporting the new commission. I know you ran, you're entering right into this really big situation. And, and it's timely, it's, it's needed. I think it's going to take a lot of work to get out there and get people to, to support the, the tax measure. One thing that I would love you guys to consider or agendize for early September is the possibility of, of being able to say to voters that, that the, the budget of the library, that, that money will be taken, I'd like you to consider taking money from reserves so that if we do pass the measure in November, the libraries can open in January. Because I think we've got a really big hill to climb in getting this passed, and if we could say to people something as simple as, vote for this, and the Mondays will be open again, and evenings will be open in, even Mondays will be open in January, because the, the library commission has decided that, and the library staff is behind it. It will be easier than having this whole contingency and have to explain the legal, the legal aspect of needing to make that big change in Sacramento. I'm hoping the change in Sacramento happens concurrent or in time, but just to have that, even if it means, you know, having to adjust things six months later, or some months later, I'm pretty sure we're going to get this passed. I really think it's great that, that our county administrator, Ms. Ferguson, is really on top of that and expressed confidence in that. I'm looking forward to them getting that taken care of. But just, my, my fear as somebody who is, is a grassroots organizer and has been involved in this for a while, is that it's, I, I don't want to have, have to tell a complicated story to parents and voters. And they sort of start glazing over when you, when it gets too complicated. So I'd just love you to consider allowing us, you know, on the campaign, to be able to say, vote for this, libraries will open Mondays in January. And then, so if you can consider that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments from the public regarding this particular resolution? Okay. Any further comments from the commissioners? I'm looking around, Paul, and I'm seeing nothing. All right. Now we'll move on to, Paul, do you have any further comments? All right, so we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Aye from Oregon. Any opposed? All right. We are moving on to the next item. The next item, thank you. And I really can't thank the Board of Supervisors and county staff enough. Thank you so much. All right. Item number 5.2. This is a resolution for the Library Commission to introduce the reading, the title and the waiving of further reading of a proposed ordinance imposing transactions and use tax to maintain and improve library services. Now, my understanding is that this is a little bit, well, not necessarily different than the procedure at the Board of Supervisors, because what we're doing at this meeting is putting it forward to vote on next Thursday. So this is not a vote to put it on the ballot. This is a vote to put it, move it forward, to put it on the ballot possibly. And as I spoke earlier, we'll know about that, much more about that by, I'm going to say, 2 o'clock on Tuesday. I've sat at some Board of Supervisors meetings, thank you very much. And so we will, we will know more about that when we come next Thursday to make our decision. Are people clear about what we're saying here? All right. Did you understand that, Paul? Well, you know, we would all have the right to vote on Thursday. But I, I can really only speak for myself, but, and I won't ask for any thumbs up or down, but I would imagine that if the, if it's final at the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, I would vote no on Thursday. I'll state it right out there. But if, if the board, for some reason, something happens with the board, then it will be something to consider on that Thursday. Brett, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. I noticed that the copy of the ordinance that is included in your packet does not have the wording added, and the unincorporated areas of the county.
That's document 4.2.1, 8.1.14.
That's correct.
And it's on the second page of that document in the very top paragraph.
Right. So on.
And what is the actual wording?
So what I'd propose that you add is after Winsor, add the phrase, and the unincorporated areas of the county, to the commission ordinance.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion. So move? Okay. I'll second. Did you get that? All right. Now it's open for more discussion from the commissioners.
So I'll go back to my posting of the agenda on Thursday in Hell, Michigan, which is where I'll be, basically. And so it looks like we're going, if we vote for this, we will have a Thursday meeting to vote yea or nay on it, one way or another.
And we will need a two-thirds vote, okay, to approve it. A supermajority from the commission.
So I should go ahead and have the posting of the agenda.
How many hours before does he need to post the agenda?
24. Is it 72 now?
72 in Michigan.
Oh, it's 72. I thought it was 24. Okay, 72 hours. Let's see, let me do the math. 9:30 Tuesday, the supervisors are going to take this up. Hmm. Okay, and it's a few, and we're three hours difference, okay.
Well, I think that if you wanted to, you could post it. If I'm wrong, somebody tell me. And then on Thursday evening, you could write canceled.
Okay. I think I will send it this weekend and have my friend, Bruce Brown, this is the Brown Act, and being at Bruce Brown's house, so it's kind of fun.
You can, it's 72 hours in advance, and you can post it earlier than that. That's fine.
Great, thank you.
All right. And we will be in touch with you. I have your phone number. I'll let you know Thursday. Okay. I mean, Tuesday.
And you'll, and, and there'll be a call-in number, like Paul has called in. The one that works.
All right.
Good. Okay, thank you. Yes. I guess it's a new one, Paul.
Paul, do you have any comments to add to this or questions? All right. There's a, there's, it's now time to open for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this resolution? I see none. So moving on, public comment is closed. Time for a vote. Any final questions? All right. All those in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Do you should, you vote for the amended?
The amended resolution. All those in favor of the amended resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That is now finished. I believe the next item on the agenda is to adjourn the meeting and have the refreshments in celebration of our new JPA and new commission. Thank you, Paul, for coming. We are moving forward.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you, Paul. You can take down this, the information sheet now, and I don't think, you're missing out on some fruit and vegetables.
I'll miss it.
Oh, okay, well, have fun.